You're live.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 9:03 a.m. And we are in order and I'd like somebody to move that we approve the agenda, please, for today's meeting. Jeremy, second? Anybody? Brian? And all in favor of approval of the agenda, please? And we're good. All right. Any disclosure of any disqualifying interest at all from anyone? Okay, good. Thank you very much. And then we just have to approve the minutes of the April 21st meeting. Would anybody like to move that we do that April 21st meeting? Approve the minutes? Okay, Anthony, second? Somebody, anybody?
I don't even remember what they are, but I'll put second.
All in favor? And we're carried. All right. And now at this point, I would really like to turn the meeting over to have lead on the meeting be Brian Bell. Brian wonderfully suggested this idea that we all think is great and we hadn't thought of. And Brian, we have our guest Terry, who thank you very much for coming, Terry. Would you start it off, please, and talk about why we're doing, you know, the fact that we're here and start their conversation with Terry?
Okay, I will. Thanks, Linda. And again, welcome to Terry. Thank you for taking the time to come to our meeting. I'm sure you've got a lot of other things you could be doing. Especially with COVID, everybody's really busy, even though you don't think you were going to be, but at any rate. So over the last couple of years at our meetings, questions have come up from time to time regarding the relationship between the Village Green and the station. And sometimes we get answers, sometimes we don't necessarily get a good answer. And sometimes maybe we're asking the wrong people. And I think it basically comes from not really understanding what the agreement is between the Township of Clearview and the Clearview Community Foundation. And so we invited you here today to ask if you could illuminate us on what the details of the agreement is so that we can have an understanding of it. And secondly, where you see this relationship going as we go forward?
Okay. Not a problem. Thanks, Brian. And thanks, Linda, for inviting me to your meeting. I think Linda and I also had some very healthy discussions last week. As Linda had expressed, some very valid concerns. So yeah, so I could definitely explain a little bit about the agreements that Clearview Township has in place. And yeah, and talk about the relationship moving forward. So the I do, so we have two ways. I could just kind of verbal verbally kind of explain to you the nuts and bolts of the agreement. I also have a copy of it here on my screen that I could share with you if required. You know, if there's some clarification that's required. But I'll do my best to try to explain it verbally and just let me know if you want me to share my screen. So at the moment, the lands known as the Village Green is owned by Clearview Township. It was transferred to the township once the the former bank had, I guess, donated the land to the community. From there, Clearview Township created a bylaw which included both a construction agreement and a management agreement between the Clearview Township and the what's been called the Creemore Community Foundation. So the foundation is the actual corporate entity that has signed the agreement with the township. So right now we're in the construction agreement phase. As you know, the village is being built. And once the village is completely built and it's finalized and they've completed the the park as per their designs, then the management agreement will kick in. And and the agreement and the management agreement is a 20-year agreement. It's actually in five, four, five-year increments. So every five years, the management agreement kind of renews itself unless, you know, both sides have issues or concerns and they would want to tweak that agreement. But in essence, it's a 20-year agreement. The the obviously Clearview Township owns that those lands. They also own the land, being the Station on the Green Hall that that your board manages. And our department, our Parks and Rec Department, is tasked to managing both the management agreement with the Creemore Foundation with respect to the Village Green Park, as well as task to managing the agreement with the Station on the Green Hall. And obviously working with with you folks as 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 the board. So we're tasked to making sure everybody's following their agreements and in doing what they said that they would do. At the moment, we feel very confident. You know, I guess maybe a bit of a segue into the so that's kind of the agreements part, a little bit of a segue into the agreements question, Brian, that you had. You know, our department feels that, you know, at the end of the day, the intent is to have a beautiful parquet area down there right downtown in Creemore, beautiful Creemore. And have folks utilizing the park and all the new amenities that the Creemore Foundation wants to add to that to that location and as well as utilizing the Station on the Green Hall from time to time for, you know, specific events that may come up. As part of the management agreement, the Creemore Foundation are committed to hiring staff for the for that park year round. They're calling it a community coordinator. I think it's the actual term that they use. I'm assuming that's the right word that they're using. Yeah, so they're calling it a community coordinator. No, sorry, a program coordinator, sorry, program coordinator. And that person will be specifically utilized for the Creemore, for the Village Green. So they're going to have somebody, you know, boots on the ground every day, monitoring the park, monitoring the the flowers and the trees, you know, working with the horticultural society. As you know, making sure that the park looks beautiful and and that was a requirement that, you know, we had put in place and something that they also want to have in place to create programming, to bring life to that park. So I'm assuming, so to my knowledge, they have not hired the program coordinator yet. I think at some important time, Brian, you know, once that person is hired on behalf of the Creemore Foundation, then maybe another meeting like this probably should happen. And they can explain a little further, you know, their role in managing that park and their role and, you know, being that contact person for you folks from time to time, whenever there are issues or concerns or you know, or events that they have planned that that they want to entertain. Obviously, COVID has had an impact on on that park, on the construction timelines. I was just looking over the agreement this morning and pretty much everything is kind of been pushed a year due to the to due to the pandemic, which is unfortunate, but you know, we've all been dealt this this hand. Unfortunately, it's pushed everything a year. So I think they're hoping on having a program coordinator hired right now. But obviously they have not, and I'm anticipating them hiring somebody very soon. And I guess on a final note, as per our agreement, as per the township's agreement with the Creemore Foundation, we're to have annual meetings with them for them to kind of explain to us, you know, their programs, communicate some concerns they may have, you know, present their financials to the township. And that hasn't happened yet either. Stuart Lazir, who is kind of spearheading that project, had sent a request back in, I think, February or March to have our annual meeting, but we wanted to wait for our new CIO, John Ferguson, to be on board and be part of those discussions. And so John's been on board with us for about three weeks now, three weeks to a month. And I know his assistant Jennifer has sent a request to him through his calendar to book a meeting in the very near future. And obviously, your worship, Doug, measures will also be involved in. And we're hoping to get a bit of an update from them on on their construction timelines, on their timelines for hiring a coordinator and any other miscellaneous issues that may have. So that should be happening, I would say, within the next couple of weeks. And, you know, from there, we should be able to communicate back to yourselves or or enter council, you know, where they're at and and seeing if, you know, how COVID has impacted their their project. So in in a bit of a Reader's Digest type of version, Brian, that's kind of like the how the agreements are set up. And, you know, that's and that's the relationship that we're looking forward to to having with both the Creemore Community Foundation as well as the Station on the Green Hall. So with that, I'm available for any questions, Brian, or I can address any concerns that I that I think I can. And if not, I could always bring back more questions or comments to the to our meeting with them in the very near future if there's any outstanding concerns.
Mayor, measures?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. And Madam Chair, Terry, a good review of the agreement. There are a couple of little items that I made a note of that I I know are in the agreement, but I thought I'd bring it to your attention. One of the changes that council asked for during the public consultation process, you know, if you remember during that, several meetings we held, we discussed with the community. Stuart Lazir and and other members of the foundation made a commitment about the BIA. And it had to do with the the fact that the TD Bank lands, the former building as a taxpaying, you know, entity, also contributed to the BIA levy. And so by taking down the building, they would actually not be doing that. And so the question was put to them whether the foundation would continue to pay the levy to the BIA and the foundation committed that they would continue to pay it for the 20-year term of the agreement. They would agree to pay it at the 2018 rates, however. And so they're going to have a fixed rate for 2018 on that property for their BIA levy that will extend for the next 20 years. You know, there has recently been a little bit of talk about whether the BIA levy may change. You know, the BIA has their, you know, concerns and they need funding to continue to operate. So anyway, just to be clear that the foundation agreed to continue to pay the levy, which continues to support the BIA as a little bit of income for them. The other point that was made at the at the agreement by council was about public art. Certainly, this committee has had long talks about the fountain and the work of the fountain. And the clarity was made in the agreement, absolutely clear that the public art that's been donated to the municipality such as the fountain and the the gender item thing. Yeah, you know what I mean? Piece of artwork is beautiful sculpture. Those do remain property of the Township of Clearview and you know, we have, it's part of the agreement that they'll that they'll, of course, look after them as part of the fountain and and part of the park process. But they are public art and they are the property of the Township of Clearviews. Those are the the two items that council had changed in the agreement and had clarified. And the last thing that Stuart Lazir has me a couple of times before we signed the agreement and and once actually afterwards as well. And I feel very confident that this is going to be a great project for the for the community and and I think it's going to be great. So I just wanted to put that forward so that you guys understood those two little items that were added to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You said that, sorry, maybe I missed something. So the the pieces of art, they're the responsibility of?
Well, first of all, they've been donated to the municipality of Clearview, so are the property of Clearview. So they will be, they will remain our property. But the artwork will be part of the park and they will be maintained in the park by the by the foundation as part of the park process.
All right, that's what I wanted to make sure of because that's what I want. Yeah, because the station had been caring for the art up until now. So I thank you very much. That's good.
Well, I know that was interesting. I've been to your meetings and certainly heard the discussion about the the waterworks, etc. So so as a result of the the redevelopment, there's pretty significant waterworks that are changing. In, you know, this, there's new fountain and what do they call it, Terry? The spray? Yeah, there you go. It's a mini splash pad, very small, but still. So anyway, as a result of that, that's all part of the maintenance and the responsibility of the.
Measures for that. I think our concerns are probably more along the lines of operational and management lines. The news I heard right this morning from you was that the township now owns all that land. We thought that was going to happen in the future, but that's apparently already happened. And the construction, of course, is going ahead. The COVID is playing games with it as we know. But I think our concerns have been around mainly operational issues and some management issues. We're a management board for Clearview Township. And Community Foundation is working with Clearview Township with an agreement. And we're sort of wondering where do we fit in in this? Should we be talking to Stuart Lazir or should we be talking to you in terms of what we're doing? And this sort of plays out when we look at, for example, rentals. We know that they're going to be programming in the Village Green and they'll be holding events there. This is the plan. We also have rentals and we also have events. There is the potential that those events could be harmonious and there's the potential that those events could be in conflict with each other in terms of noise or crowds or whatever. There are other maintenance types issues that we've had. We've talked about the washrooms. We're not entirely clear about that. And I think probably we've been talking to the wrong people about that. Maybe we should be addressing our concerns. So this is sort of, I think, what we're trying to understand. What is our role? Where, you know, operationally, how do we operate in this new environment? And I could open it to questions from the board at this point? Or comments? Linda?
I can comment. I know I've already said this before, but when it comes to washroom use, when when there's an event at the station and even if, you know, if we're at Max, you know, for the for what the station can hold, our washrooms are fine. But if we have, if we have an event going, you know, if they have an event that's fairly large, to assume that our washrooms are suitable and can handle it, we can't, we can't do that. So there has to be a way, and I don't know whether we have to deal with the, you know, the foundation with Stuart, with the with the person who is going to be doing the program person or come to Terry. But really, if they're having an event and if it's going to be reasonably large, the fact of the matter is they should be bringing in porta potties. They should be dealing with that because the washrooms at the station won't be able to deal with that. The other issue is that if we're having an event and they're having an event and even noise or things, there is no conflict. It also increases the number of people who might be wanting to use the washrooms. And remember, the washrooms are also open to the public. So even if there's a wedding going on, people can come in and use our washrooms. So this has to be dealt with and it maybe should be spelled out in some way. And the other concern that was brought up by one of our board members at the last meeting, I believe it was Jeremy, with this splash pad. The other thing that we can see happening is with young kids running around getting all wet, that all of a sudden our washrooms become a change room. For because the kids are getting all wet and things like that. And again, that could create more of a problem with our washrooms, with cleaning, with all kinds of things that we're not sure of yet. But we're just thinking this is a possibility. And we know that when it comes to their program coordinator and with our booking agent, that these people have to work together. They have to. And I, again, you know, it's awkward to try to figure out what would happen. I mean, again, things do come into my head like most of our rentals, by the way, and most of our money comes from the regular renters. So from the church, from the you know, the children's group that comes there from Tai Chi, yeah, early on, from Tai Chi, that sort of thing. But we do have weddings, we do have celebrations of life, we do have showers, we do have things that happen. Again, all of this has to work in some way together. And so those have come up as concerns. Where do we go about this? Who do we talk to? Terry?
So I've written down quite a bit of notes because I think you guys had about three or four concerns there. All very good ones, by the way. So first of all, I want to, you know, commend the Station on the Green Board. You're obviously very, you're into it and you have a lot of concerns. And you're probably a little bit ahead of the ballgame. All good, all good concerns, all good things to think about. But unfortunately, I don't think the Creemore Community Foundation are ready yet to kind of address some of those concerns. Because I don't think they've hired that program coordinator yet. And I'm, and I think these are all what my former boss, Steve Sage, would say, they're like in the weeds type of concerns, you know, boots on the ground and what happens when dot, 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 this happens. So I think, like I said, once this, once they hire their program coordinator, these are all very good concerns that have to be brought up, that that person needs to be aware of. I don't, so with that being said, you know, like I said, our annual meeting is coming up and I will share these concerns with Stuart and his management board so that they're aware of it and they can communicate it to their program coordinator as well and put, you know, things in place to make sure that that program coordinator can address those concerns. But I think the first question you asked was, you know, how how do we all work together? How do we all play nice in the sandbox? And I think on behalf of our department's expectation is that the Station on the Green Board would work directly with the Village Green crew or with the program coordinator. Our expectations were that, like you said, the word that you used, Linda, was harmonious, that you guys you know, play, work together, play together, communicate together amongst yourselves. And and if obviously there's a concerned or a major issue and somebody needs to kind of step in to kind of help facilitate a decision, this is where we would come into play. It wasn't our department's expectation to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the Station on the Green and its board and the Village Green or the Creemore Community Foundation. We don't really have the the time per se to really manage both those locations. Our expectations is that both organizations being professional can address those concerns. And I'm sure there's going to be 20, 30, 50 more concerns as they come up over the course of events and 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 as they happen. Our expectation, Linda, again, you know, with respect to washrooms is that, yeah, if they're going to have major events, they would provide the extra washroom services if it's porta potty or whatever other means of providing that service that they may come up with. You know, addressing some of the concerns with respect to the change, using the washroom as a change room. Again, I don't know if they've put any thought to it. Our understanding is that it's supposed to be just be like a very soft spray pad, not really a splash pad, but kids are going to get wet. And, you know, and they're going to want to get, you know, they're going to want to use a change room. So if somebody gets wet and they have to go to the washroom, you know, the kid needs to run and he's running, he's not, he's not going to wait and dry himself off. So again, very valid concerns. But I don't think I can answer them on behalf of the screen at this point. You know, and then I don't even know if they're ready to answer those questions yet. But I feel very confident that they will be able to answer and address those concerns in the future once they hire their staff and once that person, you know, meets with you with your, I think you called it your what was the person you called? Your booking agent, sorry, your booking agent and that program coordinator, you're right, they're going to be the two people on the ground that are going to have to communicate extensively and especially, you know, during their planning process. So in essence, to answer your question, I, you know, we're hoping that you guys, both organizations will work together. We hope that both organizations will communicate and plan together. And if the township or our department has to get involved, we will. But we're again, we're hoping that we we don't and we're hoping that and from time to time, maybe we need to get involved to assist. And and we're here for that. Like, we're here to help. We're, I don't, I don't want to run to the hills. But I don't think that we have to get involved on your day-to-day in the weeds type of planning or communication at this point. So I hope I've answered your question. All, like I said, your your concerns are very valid. I'll bring them to our annual meeting. I'll let Stuart know, look at Station on the Green, they've they've raised a few flags. And, you know, something for you to think about and something for you, Stuart, to talk to your new staff about and and get ready for, because this will come up. And and one last comment, I guess I could say is, I think Stuart and the Community, Creemore Community Foundation have the same expectations. They want to work with you folks, you know, they they understand that you guys are married at the hip there from a lands perspective. The, you know, their their original plans was to utilize Station on the Green washrooms. They had the same expectations. They want to work with you. They want, at the end of the day, it's all about providing an incredible experience in that location. And I think they have the same intentions. They want to work with you folks. And they're looking forward to it as well. And and they know that, you know, for all this to work, everybody has to get along and play well. So I hope I've answered your question.
Thanks, Terry. We are actually, I've invited Stuart Lazir to our May board meeting, the end of the month. So we will be talking to him in in terms of, yes, you're right, there will be items coming up all the time that we will be dealing with. And we'll be dealing it with the foundation. That's what we do. We're a management board. But I'm thinking more operationally right now and I want to belabor the washrooms, but we've already talked to Stuart about the washrooms. He's indicated that this township property and they aren't prepared to do anything about that. And I think I agree with Stuart. Those are township washrooms and why would he do anything about them? My feeling is that regardless of how many people come to the Village Green and the station at the same time, perhaps, whatever number of people, it's up to the township to decide that the washrooms are adequate. And if they're adequate, then they're adequate. And if they're not, then I would assume the township would make them adequate as you do everything else. So it's more a question of who do we direct those big issues to? And you you mentioned meeting once a year. Would it be possible to perhaps meet set up meetings with the station, the green and perhaps yourself or designate even quarterly, once every three months, just to have an overview of what's happening so that we're all on the same page and we're working together to make this as successful as possible? I'm just concerned that we've got two groups operating within the same area under the same township. But there's opportunities where, yes, they can work together, but there's also opportunities that they can be at odds with each other and that doesn't need to happen.
Yeah, so I think I gathered two questions there, Brian. So the first, the first I'm going to address is you're saying maybe meeting, you know, every three months. I would expect maybe that we would, we could, the three or the three groups could probably actually meet on a monthly basis when when they start off. So say the first four to six months, you know, as new and as things are getting going, and that's probably when the bulk of the concerns or issues will will surface, that maybe we actually meet on a monthly basis for the first six months. And I could propose that to Stuart when we meet. When I say annual meeting, that's an annual meeting between council and the Creemore Community Foundation. And, you know, Village Green is one component of that meeting. Maybe there are other items in that annual meeting. But from an operational perspective, Brian, I don't think nothing prevents us from meeting on a monthly basis. You know, having a formal agenda and and and, you know, discussing any issues or any planned events. So, yeah, that's a good one. That's not a problem. And we would be happy to join those meetings. That's that's not a problem. But I would suggest monthly versus every three months for the first six months. And then maybe after that, we can meet every three months because maybe we've ironed out most of our issues by then. And I think the second question you had is, who determines the Station on the Green Hall's washrooms for being adequate? You also mentioned, you know, You also mentioned, you know, you know, Stuart doing something about them. I'm curious to know what you mean by that. Like, what do you mean by, you know, Stuart said that he needs to do something about them? Do you mean like expanding them or, or renovating them? What's, what's the concern with the washrooms at the moment?
Now, we've, well, you've heard some of the concerns presented here, but we have approached Stuart more than once about. Whether the community foundation would upgrade the washrooms if, if it was required. And his answer both times was no. That was a town, those are township washrooms. That would be up to the township. And I, I suspect he's right on that really because. They are township washrooms and the township would. Would make sure that whatever's there is meets the needs. It's, it would be adequate and meet safety concerns and so on and so forth. But I suspect he's right about that. And that's why, you know, I said earlier, maybe we're asking to wrong people. But that's why I think it would be helpful i- if we could form some kind of a. Group that we share information together. And do we go through you for that? Or how do we do that?
Yes, right. Brian, you're right. You're, you're correct. With respect to the building itself. Whenever there's upgrades anywhere in that building, that's a discussion between our department and the station on the green board. So it's something that we would investigate, evaluate. If upgrades are required, we would bring that back to council. To see their direction and, you know, put a proposal forward for them to, to think about. I'm thinking about the recent. Furnace upgrades. I think that was done at the station on the green as a comparable example. You know, some upgrades needed to be done there. There was a bit of a funding format that was put together and it was brought to council and they approved it. So any washing upgrades, I think we go through a similar process. We would, you know, but any type of upgrades to the building would come between us. You know, we would inform the Creemore Community Foundation. Maybe they'd want to get involved in some assistance. And maybe they'd want to get involved in some sort of funding model to improve those washings. But that, those discussions are between us. And not, and Stuart is correct and you are correct. That's not a discussion really for Stuart to get involved with unless we feel that, you know, we want to bring them involved in those discussions. You know, we will also have to have a discussion with our billing department. To find out if those washrooms are presently adequate. You bring up a very good question. That's something that I would do to find out, you know? What's the capacity, you know, limits on the use of those washrooms? So Linda brings up a good point. If you have a wedding going on and you have the general public attending. And the Creemore and the Villas Green has an event going on, there's going to be a lot of stress on those washrooms. And so what's, what's adequate? You know, what's quote unquote adequate for those washrooms? And so we're going to have to determine that with the building department as we move forward. But again, just to clarify, yeah, any building improvements would go through us, through our department.
Yeah. And thank you for that. And I like your, your suggestion of having the, the monthly meetings once this starts up. Between yourself and Village Green and ours and the station. There's so many things that will come up and who do we direct those concerns to? And I think that would help facilitate a lot of that. And get things going the best way possible. And. After things get going, we get into a pattern, we'll know, everyone will know what's, what we're doing and everything should work out well. And we'd like to see it go that way. As opposed to getting into. Discussions, if you will, about what's, what's happening and what's not happening and who should be doing what. I just think operationally it would make it a lot smoother.
Yep. And Brian, you know, once, once they hire their program coordinator, we'll, we'll get a bit of a sense from them. When we meet them in the next couple of weeks of when that program coordinator will be hired. And, you know, care of your township and our department, you know, kind of managing the lands and the building there. We will facilitate like a bit of an inaugural meeting. Between their staff and their management board and station on the green and ourselves and, and my team. I mean, I have a team of folks too that can be involved as well. And we can have, we can facilitate. You know, the first meeting between all the groups. Hopefully it's face-to-face versus over a Zoom call. But yeah, we will definitely facilitate that first meeting, you know, doing some introductions, maybe even talk about. The agreements that we all have in place. I think I need to educate them as well on what type of agreement we have with the station on the green board. You know, they may equally have some questions on, you know, what's the dynamics between your management board and, and the township and our department. So I'll have to educate them as well on, on that perspective. So. Now, we're going to facilitate that meeting as soon as they have somebody hired. But I, I truly believe, Brian, that. We should have those meetings once they have their boots-on-the-ground person hired. You know, so that we can communicate directly to them, you know, concerns, you know? Issues and even ask, you know, answer some of their questions that they may have and get that going. So, yeah, we're going to facilitate that, Brian, as soon as we know that they've hired their person.
Great. That'd be great. Can you share the agreement? Would you be able to send Linda a copy of the agreement?
And Jeremy's been having, Jeremy's had his hand up a couple of times, Brian. He's got a question.
Sorry, I didn't see it, Jeremy.
Yeah, it's okay, Brian. Actually, it, I just wanted to assure. Excuse me, Mayor Measures and I, yourself, Terry, that you don't need to leave here feeling in a panic to go on in. Capital budget. What we were trying to understand was, you know, how to deal with influxes of more people and, you know, we all anticipated the use of. Portable toilets on, once we did know an event happened. You know, we just look at the, the standards that the brewery sets when. When they have an event, they, they look after all that themselves, right? So overflow may come up to the station, but. The general downpour would all happen over in your area. So, yeah, so that, that was really the comment and, and. You know, one of the things that might come up would be what are the standards or does. Does township have standards in terms of numbers of, you know, facilities, what the facilities are per crowd or per person or per. I don't know if that's available, but that would be a very helpful kind of bit of information so that we could all. Plan and we could talk to, you know, at least Stuart would understand, like those are the parameters that we're working with.
Yeah. Yeah. All very good comments and very good questions, Jeremy. And again, like I said earlier, I commend you folks on. Bringing this up and thinking about it now and not waiting for it to kind of happen. Good on you. And so, yeah, we're, we're definitely here to, to help and address. And, yeah, and. You know, we've been, we have a lot of these agreements in place when we're used to people or folks or organizations bringing concerns forward. So we're not panicking, but, but thanks for that, Jeremy. And the final point is, yeah, there are some standards, Jeremy, with respect to washing use. We mainly follow the Ministry of Health. So this is in Comus Koka District Health Unit. They set guidelines and standards for washing facilities. So we follow those guidelines. So those can be, those will be communicated. We're hoping that their program coordinator understands those standards as well. But, yeah, there are some standards in place. And if it's a liquor license event, there's even over and above standards to, to address those. Events or concerns. So if you're going to have a licensed event, there's even greater standards than the minimum, than, than the minimum standards that the health unit provides. So again, if they're going to have a licensed event, then we'll, we'll have to address those standards as well. But, yeah, we mainly follow the ministry's standards and, you know, and we can help you guys. You guys all know Amanda Murray. She's our events guru. She knows these regulations at the back of her hand. You know, and we can definitely get her involved as well when, when both, when everybody's planning events, you know, and, and to assist. And we've been doing it now. As you know, we have this, you know, we had this summer washing agreement going on with the BIA. And so, you know, we got involved to help communicate the standards and, and the signage and all the rules around that as well during a pandemic, mind you. But, so, yeah, so that's definitely our goal. Jeremy is to bring, educate. Everybody involved with respect to those standards. And we, as the building owners, you know, we're going to, you know, if we need to address concerns or make enhancements. Or make additions or improve the washrooms. Then that'll be, that'll be brought forward to council. And, you know, we'll put a business case together, you know, with some, with some, some reasons why we need to do it. And I'm sure council will entertain those, that know those business cases and address those issues as, as they come up.
Well, thank you very much, Terry.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Terry, I want to thank you once again for attending this meeting. We, we always enjoy meeting with you. And also through yourself have been very helpful to the station over the years. We appreciate that. And Mayor Measures, you're always welcome at our meetings as a ex officio director of the board. But you've been very helpful. And Terry, again, thank you for everything you've been doing. And we appreciate the time that you've given us and the information and. We wish everyone well. I think we're pretty well done here.
You're welcome.
Turning it back to Lynn.
Can I take over now?
I assume you do. I do have one comment, Brian, if you can, if I may. Again, thank you for inviting me. If I could be invited to your meeting with Stuart, I think you said you had a meeting planned with Stuart in the next couple of weeks. I wouldn't mind being, you know, a delegate in that meeting if you don't mind.
It's on May nineteenth.
Okay.
And again, at nine AM.
Okay.
And, yeah, we had invited Stuart to that meeting just to get an update basically on what's going on at the Village Green. But, yes, you, I, I mean, I can't turn you down. And so it would be up to Kayla, of course, she would send you an invitation.
Perfect.
And that would be, that would be marvelous. So our next meeting, as I said, is on May nineteenth at nine AM. And unless there is any other business. Believe it or not, oh, Miss Mayor Measures, and what is the other business?
Thank you. I, I just want to get back to a question about the washrooms. And that is, I know you, you do have an agreement starting with the BIA. Do you know when that is going to be activated, Terry, or your board? When, when is it starting?
I was talking to, I was talking to Sarah Hersoff the other day at the Echo. And she said that they won't be doing anything until the lockdown is over.
Of course.
So, so they're waiting. So they were, you know, they were looking at, you know, the May long weekend, but who knows? Like, I mean, the lockdown, I don't know. Like, I mean. We all know that that lockdown could be extended. So they have no intention of doing anything until the lockdown is over.
Fair enough. I, I just wanted to check with you if, if, if they were aiming for perhaps Canada Day weekend, which I think will be a big weekend. Personally, I think it's going to be a big weekend across Ontario. So.
I, I don't know. As I think, as I said, at one point, they were looking at the May two, four weekend. And now we'll just have to wait and see. And Sarah seems to be the one to contact.
Yeah.
I've, I've talked to her and I've talked to Lori. And so that's, that's where I get it from. And I hope that all works out well. And it's wonderful that they brought in and that there's, you know, that there's going to be some, there's financial commitment. Which is marvelous because, you know, I mean, it's, it's really tough to financially commit to anything when we're not making money.
No kidding. You're not alone. All the boards are having the same problem in the hall.
Yeah, we're, but we are so fortunate that we don't have to come up to the standards for the accessibility. Thank goodness. Thank goodness.
For now.
Yes. Terry?
I just wanted to say again, again, my final comment, as I mentioned, we were planning on meeting Stuart and his foundation with John, Mr. Ferguson. And so, and you're saying that you're meeting Stuart on May the nineteenth. So I don't know which one's going to happen first. So, because I do have a few takeaways to bring with me to that meeting, but your meeting with Stuart might happen before my, our meeting with Stuart. So a lot of your questions and concerns, I may not have an opportunity to, to share them with Stuart. You know, depending on when this meeting is going to happen.
Would you like us to, would you like us to delay the meeting or anything?
No, please do not. No, please do not. My point is just that, you know, you might, in that meeting, you might say, well, has Terry spoken to you yet? And the answer would be, well, no, because we haven't had a meeting yet. So, but no, please don't delay by any stretch.
But you still want to attend on the nineteenth?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Hundred percent. Yeah.
Yeah, because, all right. That is fine. I, see, the most important thing, I think, for us, we want to be collaborative. We don't want to, we, we, we don't want to start butting heads. We don't want to become, you know, that way, but. So I think the most important thing is for our board. To know is that we don't want to become argumentative and we do want to stay collaborative. That is essential. And hopefully that will, that will work. I'm, I'm hoping that will work. And, but as of right now, unless anybody else has anything that you would like to say. Anything else going on in the world? Um, you know, other than the fact there's nothing going on in our world. Okay, Jeremy, did you have anything you wanted to contribute?
No, thank you very much.
No. Tom, anything?
Nope.
Anthony, wherever you are. Anything? Everything is, everything is done. Okay. Well, again, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Terry, for, for coming. That is great. And. Yeah, Kayla, you can come back, Kayla. I like seeing you, Kayla. Thank you. So you'll remember to invite, include Terry in our meeting on the nineteenth. Okay, you, you're muted.
Absolutely.
All right. And. Would just say that the meeting is adjourned at, according to my lovely phone, nine fifty. My Fitbit is telling me I have to get up and walk. It's not happy with me. And I will see everyone at the next meeting. Kayla, can you stay there for a minute, please?